This is the Goss Town Select Board October 21st meeting. I'd like to call the meeting to order, and first up would be the Pledge of Allegiance.
The Pledge of Allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under our intev- [unintelligible] justice for all.
Next thing is the acceptance and correction of the minutes from the 10 at 7, public and non-public minutes.
Make a motion, we accept the 10, 7, 24, public and non-public minutes of the meeting with corrections if need be.
Second. Motion by Mark, seconded by Collins. Any discussion changes? Seeing none, all in favor?
Aye.
Pos. And then the motion passes. Announcements, I just want to make a quick reminder that November 2nd will be the drawdown for Glen Lake, Greg Falls Dam. Again, that'll be November 2nd, so we can start watching for that. Anybody else have any comments? Seeing none. Is there anybody here from the public to make a public comment? Seeing none, we'll move on. We have an appointment with Jonathan Quinn. This is in reference to Community Power Coalition of New Hampshire, and he has a presentation. Kelly and I'll have to move out of the way.
Yeah, if you push that, it'll bring up. Just take just a second.
Is it dark enough for everybody to see?
Yeah, it'll be.
Okay, so, hi, everybody. My name is Jonathan Quinn. I live on Angel Point Circle. I am not affiliated with Community Power. I'm just a resident here. I learned about it a few months ago, and it seems to me like a good idea, so I asked what I could do to help, and I'm gonna give you all a little information about it. There are three key points I just want to make. It's a voluntary program. If the town decides to go forward and become a member, everybody is automatically in. People can opt out. The rates they have negotiated, basically, they're a demand aggregator. So, you know, right now, Eversource supplies the power, and all of us, we have no power to negotiate what the price is. What these guys do is they pool all the residents together, and I'll tell you more about that in a minute. And so that gives us a little power to save some money. And then finally, there's no cost to the town. I'll, I have a little summary of what the town has to do to start if the town decides to go forward, but it isn't very much. So, this tells you basically where they are right now. They've got 63 municipal and four county members already, so it looks like a fair amount of the state. More than a third of the population, and about 170,000 people. So, we wouldn't be the first ones. They seem to know what they're doing. And by the way, if there's any questions, feel free to ask. Otherwise, I'm just gonna zip through, because I know you guys have a lot on your plate. One of the things I like about it the most is that we would, everybody, if the town goes forward with it, all the residents have choices. On the bottom, you can see that Eversource is charging 10.4 cents. If you're just not interested in renewable energy or anything like that, you would be paying 8.6 cents. So you'd save somewhere around $130 a year. But if you wanted to have renewable power, then you would pay, again, depending on how much you want, the same as Eversource or even more. I'm not 100% sure how that works, but basically, I think what they do is aggregate, and they aggregate the amount of people who say they want the renewable energy, and then they buy that much energy from solar farms and wind turbines and so on. But the beauty of it is there's choices. The utility will still send out the bills, nothing changes, you know, you don't put any new poles, there's no infrastructure change. It's just that it'll, they'll be using and getting the benefits of community power. Whoops. I'm going by too fast. So, the implementation process is pretty easy. If the town decides they want to do it, they just join, and then you have to create a committee, have two public hearings, and then that's it. There's no costs, and then once the town is a part of it, there's no ongoing, there's no ongoing responsibilities for the town. So you would just have a couple things to do in the beginning, and then it kind of runs itself. So, come on. It's, it's, it seems to be a little slow, Derek. There it is. So, just to summarize, the default will be that everybody will be enrolled unless you already have some other third-party supplier. And anybody can opt out if they wish. The utility will continue to deliver the electricity and do the billing, and people could still use a third-party supplier if they wanted to. And there'll be no taxes, no cost to the town. So, it just seems to me like a pretty obvious thing. So, that's why I'm here, and that's why I'm talking about it. So I guess the only thing to do is ask if there's any questions or comments.
You covered quite a bit pretty quick.
Oh, okay. I'm happy to go back.
Nope, that's okay. Go ahead, Kelly.
I have some logistical questions, but I'm not sure if you can answer them. Derek, you might know. So it says that town meeting, sorry, where did I just read that? Town meeting adoption of the AP authorizes, but is not required, the Select Board to contract services. Finance, launch, and operate community power, because this is everyone's opt-in. Is that something we would have to put on the ballot?
Yes, yes. It's my understanding it would be a question that would go on to the warrant for the voters to vote on.
Okay. My next question is that it says that there are no upfront costs, but are there contractual obligations by the town further down the road, any other?
No, no. Because what, the costs are borne by all the users, so they take a small piece out of every individual payment. So the town itself is not responsible. But everybody who uses it, you know, whatever the rate they charge you, it includes in it whatever their fee is. It's not a lot.
Is there any sort of, oh, gosh, I have so many questions. The other municipalities that are currently participating, does this Community Power Coalition of New Hampshire have any sort of testimonials of how that process went, or any other information that we can use?
I think if you go on their website, there's a lot of good information on there. And by the way, on the handout that I gave, the one-pager, it has the contact information on the bottom of a guy named Andrew Hatch, who is the community outreach person. I mean, I'll answer what I can, but again, I'm just a Goss Town resident who would like to see us adopt something like this. If you had any, and I'll answer whatever I can, but anything else, he would be happy to answer any other questions that I don't know the answer to.
Sir, do you happen to know what the communication looks like? Does this Community Power Coalition take on informing residents and informing them of what the opt-in or, I'm sorry, the opt-out process is like, and help to manage that?
That's a good question. I don't know. You'd have to ask Andrew.
Okay.
I would imagine that they would have some kind of, I would imagine they have some kind of preset form letter that they could give to you that could be sent out to everybody or included in the, you know, the weekly advertisements or something like that.
Yeah.
So I'm thinking, I'm thinking if it's something we're interested, maybe we need to get, we'll get more information, and maybe even get Mr. Hatch to come in and speak with us.
Yeah. I can't speak for him, but I can't imagine he would not want to do that.
Would that, would that be?
Yeah, I think that's important, Peter, because this has to be approved by the voters. I mean, there needs to be some upfront education and outreach.
Well, it needs a public hearing, too, right? You said, Derek?
The handout says there's two public hearings.
Is that before?
Yes, I would assume that would be before.
That goes on the ballot?
Yes. I don't, I honestly don't know.
All right. So we need to do some research, I guess.
Yeah, so Mr. Quinn asked to come to kind of advocate for this program before we dedicated any staff resources to finding out more information. Wanted to get a kind of a feel from the board if you felt that it was worthwhile to get additional information.
Well, I think as everybody's worried about their funds and taxes and increasing utility costs, that that's something you'd have to explore every possible possibility out there.
Thank you for bringing this to us. It's certainly our job to dive into the nuts and bolts a bit, but, you know, it sounds great, so thank you for letting us know about this program.
You're welcome. Kelly, if you would like, or if anybody would like to just, you know, send me the question, I'd be happy to introduce. If you want to designate one person to be the point person, I'd be happy to make the introduction to Andrew. Whatever I can do to help, I'm happy to do it.
So, we'll work on it. Question logistically. So this would go on the ballot, and if it's successful, then everybody in town would be automatically opted in, but have the opportunity to opt out at any time if they so choose.
That's correct.
So everybody goes in initially.
Right.
And then they can peel off.
But the default, the default position, as I showed you, you pay less. See on the bottom.
Yep.
You pay 8.6 instead of 10.4 cents. So, it's a win-win. It's how it looks.
Yeah, I understand the math. I was just questioning the process. Okay, thank you.
Sure.
Yes, Jim. You have a diagram of the state of New Hampshire, and I'm just looking at the legend here. There's different colors, green, blue, red, and county. Can you just explain what, I assume that's the phases that?
Sure. The blue ones are the towns that are already operating in community power. The yellow is where the entire county is a member. Wave for, I'm not sure what that is, but they're probably about to start, or, and planning are, you know, towns that are in process.
And how about, what's a broker?
Sorry, a broker?
Broker. There's some gray ones on the.
There's, there's two different diagrams.
You have a different.
Yeah, that was the one that they had in their Rita head packet. It's a little bit different than the one that.
I'm not, I'm not sure. I'm sorry. Sorry, I don't know what that is.
No problem. Thank you.
Any other questions? All right, so Derek, I just pulled this thing out.
Yeah.
If the board doesn't have any other questions, it seems, maybe perhaps a motion to move ahead with getting additional information and see about a more in-depth presentation at a future meeting.
Yeah, I'll make that motion.
Motion by Kelly, seconded by Mark. Any discussions, questions? All in favor?
Aye.
Pos, abstaining? Motion passes.
Well, thank you, everybody, for your time.
Would there be a time problem getting on the ballot?
Let me reach out to Community Powder, Power, and see what that, that adoption timeframe is, because we're not the first, let's say.
Yeah, I'm sure they have sample warrant articles and stuff like that.
Yes.
All right, well, thank you, everybody.
Thank you very much, sir. Derek?
All right, at page four, you have your committee meeting scheduled for the next two weeks. On Wednesday at 6:30 PM, the Historic District Commission will meet at Grassmere Town Hall.
Yep.
And Conservation Commission will meet in this room at 7:00.
Yep.
On Thursday at 7:00 PM, the Planning Board will meet in this room.
No, I'll be out of town. I cannot cover that, unfortunately.
I'll cover it.
I have the packet right here, though. So I'll hand it off to you, Mark.
Thank you. Next week, a reminder, on Monday, we'll have another Select Board meeting, again, to focus on the budget and a few other business items. And then on Tuesday and Wednesday will be a budget follow-up night at 6:00 PM for the Select Board to finalize. And then Thursday of next week, October 31st, trick-or-treat will be from 6:00 to 8:00. So we do have that. On your next page, you have a consent agenda. You have employee status reports. You have three full-time police officers that are new hires. You have three seasonal public work laborers. These are separation. They're end of the seasonal labor period. You have a full-time firefighter with a successful completion of probationary period and a full-time firefighter resignation. And then you have an event permit for the Granite State Health and Fitness Foundation Swim Race on Glen Lake for August 18th, 2025, from 8:00 AM till noon.
I'll make a motion to approve the consent agenda as presented.
Second. Motion by Kelly, seconded by Collins. Any questions? Discussion? Seeing none, all in favor?
Aye.
Pos, abstaining? Motion passes.
Now, the next item, you have a memo from the DPW Director. This is a request to salvage bicycles for student repair up at Mountain View Middle School. One of their programs is seeking to pull bicycles from the metal bin or have them left on the side. Your solid waste ordinance does provide for pilfering, that it's not allowed except by permission of the Board of Selectmen. And this would allow their coordinator to come and collect any bicycles left so that they can move on it.
I think it's a great idea. I don't see a problem with it. Adam, do you see a problem with it? Adam's on board, so he's ultimately going to be responsible.
He's gonna be fixing all the bikes.
He is now, anyway.
I'll make a motion to approve the waiver of the solid waste ordinance for the Mountain View Middle School Flex Program.
Second. Motion by Kelly, seconded by Collins. Any discussion? Questions? Seeing none, all in favor?
Aye.
Pos, abstaining? Motion passes.
At page seven, you have a draft RFP for the virtualized infrastructure refresh for the Board's review, so that we can release it. Just a little bit of background on the project. This is to replace aging hardware for our servers. And in part of this, we included monitoring, operating, and administrative services, so that they would be kind of a first response for any incidents that come across. This was originally budgeted for $280,000 in CIP. When you redistributed the default funds, you left $130,000. We do not think that that will be sufficient to do the project. However, I'm sorry, you reduced it by 130 to 150,000. So we don't believe that that'll be sufficient for this project, but we do have some savings in some of the admin wage lines, and we would be prepared to recommend a budget transfer once we get bids in to do this project. This project is currently in the 2025 CIP budget. So if bids were to come in astronomically high, or if we were not able to do this project and get it contracted in 2024, it is currently in your 2025 budget. This is something that we need to get done, and our hope is to get it contracted so that we can start here at the end of the year.
What was the, there was a suggested or recommended timeframe that we were supposed to do this, wasn't it? It's past?
So it'd normally be every seven years.
Yeah.
Yes, and we are, we are beyond seven years. So yes, we are beyond that point.
I don't have any questions on the RFP. The only thing that I was thinking that we should ask, and I apologize, I didn't think about it till just now, so I'm not sure if it's in here, is the timeframe of which the RFP bids would be good until. I know with IT, there's a lot of fluctuating costs and things like that, so I just want to make sure that if we get a bid, we have a timeframe that we know when it will be good until.
Normally, we put in a 90-day, that they hold their costs for at least 90 days. If it's not in here, if the Board is comfortable with us adding that, that we would add that, because we do need to negotiate a contract with any successful bidder, and normally, we want any other, any other companies that bid on it. If our, the selected bidder is unwilling to sign a contract, then we would move to the next, the next most competitive bid. So we can definitely add that they need to maintain the proposed cost for 90 or 120 days.
I don't like it. I don't like, I don't like taking money that was put aside for people, so we don't hire the people, then we take the money and use it someplace else. We should be hiring people that we're always, we hear all the time, we're short-staffed. Now we're taking money that's set aside for to hire people and doing something else with it. I don't like it. I've said it. This is not the first time you've heard that from me. You know, we're taking money that we should be taking care of things in the town with these funds, hiring the people. So now we're taking those funds and using them for something else. That's, you go to the Budget Committee, you tell them, we need this money to hire these people, but then we don't hire them, and we use the money for something else. Now, I realize that the budget got cut. It's a default budget, and I just don't, I don't agree with the funding. Find the money without taking it. The money that we didn't spend on personnel should be going back to the general fund. Said it before. That's my feelings. I don't, I don't like to, I don't like doing it that way. It sets up, it's still a bad precedent. Don't hire the people. We don't have a minute taker. We're short in the planning, I mean, in the building department, and we just don't hire the people so we can use that money to something else. I don't think we've aggressively done a good job trying to hire, and we're making the people in town suffer.
I don't disagree with that, but this is just for the itself. Is there other funding mechanisms available?
Well, that's something we would have to try to figure out, but I don't like taking funds. Those funds that we don't use for personnel should be going back to general fund. I've said this, that's not the first time I've said that. Is there any place else to find the money?
Potentially. This Board does not currently have a policy on budget transfers between wage or personnel cost and operating cost. So, I did, in what I thought was my best judgment, to leave some of those positions a little bit vacant a little bit longer so that we could do what is critical CIP infrastructure. This is the backbone of our technology. If the Board makes a decision that you are not willing to transfer from personnel lines because you want to return those funds, then the only other place that we could potentially do it from 2024 would be to use some of the ARPA funds. But we are currently finalizing an RFP to create revenue collection here at Town Hall to try and gain some efficiencies on the personnel side. So, I would say we may be able to get some from operating lines where there are some savings, but if we were to get it out of this year, then we might have to look at those available ARPA funds that run out at the end of the year, or leave it in the 2025 budget.
Yeah, I hear what you're saying, Peter, and I don't disagree with it. On the other hand, we've got to keep up with technology. Otherwise, we fly, slide farther and farther behind. It's gonna keep, cost more and more to catch up if we keep kicking this down the road. So I think we need to look really hard at where else we might be and find some other monies. And I'm not, I don't know the answer to that, but.
My point, my point is.
Yes, I understand.
We just heard it, that, well, I've left these open for that particular reason, and now, and you know the Planning Board's upset about not having a minute taker.
Yep.
Yeah, and we've heard it from others. And our minutes are behind. We just approved the seventh minute. There's other minutes in there that should be taken care of already.
Like I said, Peter, I don't disagree with you. I'm just saying we need to look hard for where else we can find these monies to keep, keep pace with the IT world.
Can't phase it?
We may be able to, potentially. We have asked for them to break out their costs into different categories. The hardware costs are gonna be significant. Never mind the setup, but yeah, we've got hardware, software, the support services that we've requested. This is in the 2024 budget. I had put in $150,000 into the IT budget to do some 24/7 monitoring, because right now you have what basically is one, two employees that are the ones that are, every time they go to bed, they're the ones going, you know, nobody else is monitoring. And that's a lot of strain to put on our employees, whereas if we can get those services. But yeah, and that's why we had everybody break it out, and we've indicated that we may or may not do everything. So, once we get bids back, if the Board wants to stick to the $150,000 that you reallocated, that would definitely be within your purview.
Okay. My question was, is it, can we do it in phases? You don't, we don't have that answer.
Not on the hardware and software. The hardware and software, you want to do all of the, at the same time. Some of the support services that we've asked for, we may be able to push those off, but the hardware and the software, you do those all at the same time.
All right. Do you want to ask something? Kelly?
No, I was just gonna make the motion, because I think we need to get the cost and see how they can break it out before we talk about any of the funding mechanisms. I just want to see how much it's gonna cost. So I'll make a motion to authorize the release and advertisement of the RFP seeking proposals for the virtual infrastructure refresh project to replace the existing virtualized infrastructure at Town Hall and the Police Department.
Does that include the funding that's in, what's in front of us now? Does your motion include that?
No. It's just to advertise and release the RFP.
Okay, as long as we all understand that this is not an approval, your motion is not an approval.
It's just dealing with the RFP.
All right. So you have a motion by Kelly, seconded by Mark. Any discussion?
Yeah, it's just, minute taker. Is there a way we can do both? I mean.
That's expensive. That's, how much an hour now is that?
Minute taker, I think, I don't know what the total cost, but that one, I think we budget $8,000 annually.
$8,000? We can't, we can't do this and pay $8,000?
Well, it's not just the minute taker. It's, we also have a building inspector that we don't have. We talk about, we just heard that we need to take the pressure off of IT with doing some of this. We've got the same thing upstairs with a building inspector and, you know.
Well, we can chip away at that, too. I mean, we can scale this, and we can chip away at that, too.
Well, I think that's what the idea is, was to take a look at it.
I just hope it's not that stark.
Okay, that's, I'm good. Well, the motion was by Kelly, seconded by Mark, right? Any further discussion, questions? Seeing none, all in favor?
Aye.
Pos, abstaining? Motion passes. Who, okay, you want to do the overview?
Sure. Moving into the Department Head Budget. We will have binders for you next week. So Finance and the individual departments have been working hard over the last few weeks to finish the Department Head Budget. We got the last piece of the puzzle last week, which was the insurance rates. One of the reasons we don't have full binders for you this evening is the insurance numbers were put in today. So we do need to do a couple more spot checks on the insurance and make sure that we have those 100%. On health insurance, we were notified as part of their rate hearings that the town's rates increased by 9.5%. Overall, the January group experienced an average of 9.8% increase, but there were some as high as 25%.
Wow.
As a reminder, in 2024, we had an increase of 12.8%. So these are pretty significant. One of the biggest things is the Health Trust has a capital adequacy reserve. This is to help them make sure that they can meet their financial obligations. So that reserve is calculated by actuariales, and this year they were advised that it should be somewhere between 95 and 150 million for all of the different groups, all the different towns, schools, and political subdivisions they have. Their reserves are currently just under 25 million. So that is really the biggest contributing factor. This is not necessarily users. This is them trying to get their reserves back up to where their actuarial is advising that they need to be.
So this doesn't directly, this is not a direct result from usage? This is a divided?
Yes. Yes.
Percentage over the course of all of the people who are part of the Health Trust?
Yes, yes.
Not necessarily the whole 9%, but whole 9.5?
Yes, correct. As they build up their reserves to where they're, they're told they need to keep them.
Okay.
There's definitely, that's why there are, there were some groups that were in the, in the low single digits for a percent increase. I think the lowest is around 3%. So, so there is different contributing factors. Overall, right now, the budget that you have before you, the general fund is currently $3.9 million above the 2024 default budget. Again, we are working from the 2024 default budget, which is basically the 2023 budget with one-time projects removed and contractual obligations. So again, so it's a, it's a pretty big number right now. $1.9 million is in CIP projects. Again, as part of the redistribution of funds and working under the default, there were some CIP projects that were delayed in 2024. So you'll, we'll see those from departments. I will be speaking about two of those this evening. We are also seeing our IT costs, our hardware, our software, and our mobile communications go up. So I have about $130,000 in IT cost increases. We also have increases in the union wages and benefits. We had three CBAs approved at this last town meeting. And then we also have non-union employees. The board voted to put in the compensation analysis and to enact that. We do have that. We have prepared the budget with steps on July 1st and a wage matrix adjustment of 3.3%. One of the items that was in that pay point compensation analysis was recommendation to maintain a competitive wage matrix. So we adjusted that by the August 2024 CPI number. So that's a 3.3% increase. The only other item that kind of is shared across departments is utilities and fuel. As you may recall from earlier this fall, Danielle did a very good job negotiating lower rates. Unfortunately, those are rates that were lower than 2024. But this entire budget, we're going to be comparing against 2023 as we come out in default. Same for the, the fuel and diesel. So those are the real general overviews of the townwide budget. And then I provided the board with a brief handout, unless you had any questions on some of those overviews of the administration. And I can get right into my requests for Town Hall.
Anybody? Go for it.
Okay. So you'll see here, we've got a line by line of the many divisions here at Town Hall, broken up. The most, administration is a pretty significant increase. It's about a 28% increase. That one, Danielle's position in the last budget was only 50% in admin. So when you actually look down at finance, finance is a zero, a negative point zero percent. So that's really a shifting of her position as well as those non-union wage increases. Town Hall, we have 22 full-time non-union employees and two part-time employees. So that's where a lot of our increases are in this year. I'll just point out also elections are down because we're going from four elections down to the one. If you turn your next page, I've highlighted a handful of cost drivers. Again, wage and wage-related lines in administration, it is, it's our biggest increase. $280,000 increases is for the pay point compensation. As you may recall, in Town Hall, the admin employees were at 10, 10.5% below the 60th percentile that the board chose to target. We also have a step increase on July 1st currently and a 3.3% matrix adjustment. Related to wages and wage-related lines, I do have a reduction of just under 28,000. There was a vacant part-time building and assessing, assessing secretary that has been vacant. And we feel that the current full-time employee that's in that department has the, the skills and the ability to really hold, handle the workload of both those departments. So I've chosen to remove that part-time position. Elections, there's a reduction of $27,000 again, as we go from four elections to one. And then legal services, legal services, I've reduced by just over $5,000. You will see a shift through the three departments that carry legal in Town Hall. I've shifted some away from planning and zoning simply because they haven't, they really haven't used it the last few years and shifted away from rebalancing property and brought it over into admin. And this is really based on the actuals that we've seen in the last three and a half years and their, their current rates.
Just a quick question on that.
Yes.
But don't we have an action going now that may carry into '25? Or is that?
So we do have one zoning board case that was heard last week. So we expect that that one would be finished up primarily in this year. And we don't have any existing assessing claims. Sometimes when some of the bigger commercial developments, we get into agreements with them, those can take up quite a bit, but.
Okay.
Yeah.
I just knew that we had that one working and I was.
Yeah, no, they had, they actually had the hearing the other day.
Good.
So we're just waiting on a decision on that one. In admin, professional dues in 2023, both Danielle and I, the town paid for ICMA dues, that's an annual increase, as well as NHMA dues. So those was, once again, paid out, but you'll see that big increase when you compare it to 2023. In elections, there is one increase. So elections had a $27,000 reduction, but I actually also have an addition. And that is $10,700. This is a new requirement of state law that towns and school districts at local elections provide an ADA tablet at polling locations. These are currently owned by the state of New Hampshire and they're used for primaries and general elections. They actually bring them down to us. They're already programmed and then we return to them. In 2024, the state will loan them to the town and we will need to pay for programming. And moving past 20, I'm sorry, 2025. And then, starting in 2026, the state is requiring that we actually have those ADA tablets. So this is for the purchase of those tablets as well as the programming. We figure the programming, talking with the state of New Hampshire and some other towns that have chosen to purchase these. The programming is probably going to be between $3,000 or $4,000. And the purchase is going to be closer to, you know, about $3,000 per tablet. We would need one for each one. So this is a new purchase to comply with that, that change in state law.
So you have that in elections. Why wouldn't that be in IT? They're going to be the ones that have to maintain it, aren't they?
They, they assist with the maintaining, but that one is really a vendor, that one is really maintained by the vendors. Our ballot counting devices are serviced by the vendors. We buy new batteries and if there's anything wrong, it's really the vendors. Our IT does not typically go into those and really do anything. So that's why I maintain it in elections.
Okay.
And then the other, there was another slight increase that we made because of the employee appreciation barbecue that's been held the last few years. We put some additional money in the wellness expenses. And then some additional cost drivers in IT. So we've added $5,000 into contracted services under IT. This is really for those trade vendors, so electressions. If we need somebody to come up and work on one of the security cameras. We've still been using funds from some of the ARPA funds available to increase some of our security and put some additional door locks. We actually had somebody in today putting door locks on the planning and land use side so that we can track people in and out of that. It makes it easier for staff as well. Computer hardware, we're seeing an increase cost in our laptops. They have moved to a model where laptops as well as desktops, they are buying one standard, one standard model so that they can trade them in and out. But we are seeing an increased cost, especially on the laptops. We maintain a regular change-out schedule. So this is not an increased number of laptops or desktops or other hardware. This is just simply the cost of those that are going up.
What's the, what's the change-out frequency, Derek?
It, it differs for each one. I have it in my notes, but I think a laptop is about four years, a PC is four years. I will get that for you. So that you have that information. It's all built into the, the budget.
Thank you.
For computer software, we're seeing some of our licenses increase. Some as high as 10 to 20%. Some of these are smaller companies that you see a big bump. The other item is, we had last year, the fire department invested in vector training management software at the cost of just under 15,000. So last year, it was budgeted in the fire department, but, and that's what we typically do. We typically budget for it in the department that's requesting for it. And then in year two, we move it over to IT. It just makes it easier for them to maintain the license and any updates or anything. Office 365, we moved to the subscription model a few years ago. We are seeing an increase in the software cost, but we're also seeing an increase in the type of software license that most users are using. When we first rolled it out, we had many of our employees on the web-based applications. And for employees that use SharePoint for a lot of their data, which is, most of the departments are moving to, but also that's what a lot of the patrol officers are using for. It simply was not working for them. We also had a couple of people here in Town Hall. The functionality in something as simple as Excel is just a little bit different in the web-based application. So we've started moving more people over to the more powerful user license. And then IMC, which is our dispatch software, that's a 10% increase. The only reason I highlight that one, that's going to be a future one that we're going to have to repurchase. That's one that I, I know that the police department and communications is starting to look to. That's a very, that's going to be an expensive upgrade. Fortunately, the voters approved the, the communication revolving fund for the dispatch revolving fund. So we'll start, we have some money going into there. And then the final item that I wanted to highlight was mobile communications. This is a pretty big increase because, working with the police department, we need to provide mobile devices for sworn police officers. They're currently using their personal devices to have apps on them to turn their body worn cameras on and off. They're also accessing SharePoint for mobile roll call and other duties that they have in the field. So rather than having many of our own softwares and apps that access our system tied into mobile devices, it's much safer that we need to move to a point where we need to start providing mobile devices to those employees that are in the field that need it, that it's, you know, mission critical.
What does that entail? Cell phones?
Yes, yeah. So there would be, you know, issued a, issued a cell phone to be able to use for, for those business items.
Derek, has there been any talk about the software licensing increases that are going 10 to 20% increase? Or is there any room to, to bid on some of those things? See if there's more.
The problem is, is we're seeing them on a lot of the applications, Office 365. The school, somehow the school gets school pricing on all of those Microsoft pricing. I know that Brian has started to talk on a state level and the state is starting to try and work with Microsoft to see if they would be willing or to look at something, whether it's long-range planning, where they start to treat us a little bit more similar to the schools. Because the schools are not seeing this big of increase because there are quite a few techno, tech breaks for those licenses. So Brian has started that effort on the state level to get some of the other IT directives and state IT to start putting some pressure on Microsoft. Some of them are proprietary software that, that departments would have to consider a different option if there is one available. And then on the last page, I highlight two projects that are in CIP. One of them, we spoke about earlier tonight. Again, this is the townwide server refresh. That's currently in the 2025 budget for $300,000. Again, my hope is to get bids back on that so that we can use 2024 funds. And I did hear the feedback from the board on, you know, preference of where those funds would come. So, but my hope is to actually pull this out of the 2025 budget. But if we get bids that are too large or the board is uncomfortable making certain budget transfers, this is something that absolutely has to be done. So that's why it's in the budget. And then the other one is the purchase of new ballot counting devices. Kathy has been contacting the two selected vendors to do demonstrations for those. We're kind of waiting till she gets to the general election before we do that. The state of New Hampshire also has a 50% grant match right now for communities to, to purchase those replacements. So again, that would be one that we may be coming back to the board later this year, recommending budget adjustment, I'm sorry, budget transfer or to use available ARPA funds, if we still have some ARPA funds, to potentially pull that out of the 2025 budget. But regardless, the indication that we're getting from LHS is those machines are coming towards end of life and they will stop supporting them. So we are trying to move forward with election computers. And that's a, right now, that's in CIP for $50,000. But again, my hope is that we can pull it out and fund that in 2024.
Derek, you said the refresh is in the budget for 300,000?
Yes, yes.
Which one is left in the ARPA fund? We don't, we have an idea.
I have a ballpark idea. We can get a more exact counting for you for your next meeting.
I heard it mentioned several times tonight.
And still, some of it's still allocated, isn't it?
Yes.
You still have some things that you plan on using that funds for?
We do, absolutely, yes. I've got a, I've got a draft RFP that I'm bringing to you next Monday night for, again, for revenue collection, a design of revenue collection to convert some offices upstairs to gain some efficiencies there. And I think we, you had allocated $200,000 for that project. So we will, we'll update that allocation as well as how much was spent and bring that to you so you have it as possible bucket of funds for this process.
What's next?
I think we had, we have Parks and Rec next, but I mean, that's a general overview, but as you're just receiving the line by line tonight, I'm sure. If you have questions, please let me know. But yeah, we had Rick in Parks and Rec up next.
Good evening.
Good evening.
So I guess what I'm going to do, in a couple of different ways, I was going to attack this. I'm going to go with a Plan B right now. And you all have that sheet that you were just given tonight, correct?
Yeah.
Okay.
You're taking?
Page 18. I'm just going to go right down through that and explain some different things. And I think that's the way I'm going to go forth with this presentation. I mean, all in all, I, I think the biggest, the biggest hit for us in our department, really, is, is the wage lines. I mean, that's, that's what really hits us the most. And you figure as far as full-time people, we have four, four full-time people. We have myself, the director, program supervisor, head grounds, ground supervisor, and then we have our ground slash program assistant. So those are our full-time positions. And I think if you look at this budget, that's probably the lines, the lion's share of the increase of the budget. In our part-time area, it's pretty much staying kind of level. You know, even when we did away with, when we ran one pool last year, we still had 10 lifeguards. We hired 10 lifeguards, but I would say there's probably four to five that are actually working full time every single week. And then we rotate in all the others when people are unable to work, sick, whatever, and fill the voids there. But I mean, as far as, as that goes, I mean, there's like 22 part time staff that we bring on for a period of summer between our summer camp counselors, lifeguards, and some part time grounds kids. So that, that line is kind of staying pretty much level. Go ahead.
Do we see a decrease in there, Rick, for the pool, with one less pool, with less lifeguard?
There's like $3,000.
Okay, thank you.
About that.
We're on the same vein, you're saying your regular part time, you saved about 3,000 because you didn't have the one pool, but you're still up, you're still up almost 4,000. So it's actually a $7,000 increase in the part time line.
Yeah, I got to be totally honest with you. I am so, I am so confused, all right? I mean, we're, I'm working off, what I did is we went off of a 24, I went off of a 24 budget. When monies were reallocated, when you all made the reallocation and we did all this, we had a set line by line budget. That's what I'm going off of. Now I'm looking at this, and it's, it's different. So in our part time wages, we had 112,000 in '24, okay? This is reading 111.
111.5.
Right. There was the readjustment. So that's why I'm going Plan B, and I'm going off of this sheet right here. Okay? So it's about a $7,000 increase from that 23.
Yes.
Correct, correct. Absolutely correct. Anyhow, but all in all, you're still, we're still hiring, actually what it is, is it's more of the, the people returning people are now at their higher end of their scale. Last summer, we created an actual scale, so we actually have a scale now for our part time employees. So a lot of those kids are at the higher, higher rate of it, too. So that's what is increasing that cost, too. Employee development, that was, that's at 2275. That's an increase of the 23 budget. But that is actually only $75 what was asked for in '24. So that's with our, we hire our, we train our own lifeguards and all that. So that's where a big piece of that is. The only, the only big change here in this one is the contract services. That line right there is, is a 4,000, about a $5,000 increase. And what we're finding, contract service line for us is all our basketball officials, lacrosse officials, that kind of service, okay? For Dave French's entire career, my 14 years of doing this, in our grades, boys and girls, grades three through eight, we've had volunteers as officials. The well is going dry. And it's time that we have to start to lean in. So what we're going to do is we're going to try to develop a youth basketball officiating program. Aaron and I have kind of worked out the details. We're going to try and work with our AD at the high school, get him involved and try and get the high school kids, grades nine through 12, interested in this trade of officiating. And what we're going to try to do is, is help train them, get them interested, give them 25 bucks a game and help out. There's like 250 games, 275 games that we cover. So that's, that's what that's in there. That's that five grand right there. That's the increase for that.
It's for the training, the training course?
No, that's just for covering the cost for them to do it.
So, so you're talking about the, you're going back to regular part time wages. Part of the increase is at $7,000 is because of that program?
No, 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 I'm on contract services now.
Okay.
Did I confuse you? Did I confuse you?
Yeah, a little bit.
So can you explain, you have, which employees are out of your part time and which ones are out of your contracted, your referees?
I just said, contract services consist of everything to do with refereeing for basketball, lacrosse, that kind of stuff. That's what contract service monies are for.
Okay, are those 1099?
Yeah.
Okay.
Yeah.
That's easier to explain than.
1099 people. Okay. Contract services, 1099 people. And other than that, electricity, electricity has to go up. I mean, that's, last year was, well, '23, it was 11.5. With, now we have the mini splits coming in, that'll hit, the message center, the sports So that's what you're just going to see that increase for.
Is there any reason other than just price for the gasoline increase?
Again, in 2024, gasoline, I had 8226 was what we were looking at. That was what was budgeted for in '24, but not in '23. So, yeah, that's an increase. But we're paying actually $2.87 a gallon, which is a little cheaper than what we were paying.
You've already over expended that budget this year.
Uh.
You were budgeted 5,377, and you're at 5821.
Well, if, if you recall, so what you see, that 2024 budget, that 2024 budget is the default budget. That is what was approved by voters. The board took a vote to reallocate funds. Would it be helpful to add in a column of what those reallocated funds would be? Would the board find that helpful?
What should we do, what in 2024 was requested?
Well, that's, yeah, that's what I would do is.
Yeah, but what, what, the question was, you know, he's already, with three months left, he's already over expended the budget.
But because, because.
I understand that reason why. I'm just saying, the when we reallocated, he's already over that, so he has to increase the 25 because.
We can add in a column with that reallocated money so you can see what departments have been operating with.
Not only that, let's not forget, he added a vehicle.
Oh, we had to bring that up.
Oh, yeah. You know, I wasn't familiar with that deal in the first place.
That's what I asked, right?
That's, that's why we had that, no.
Caught you?
Yeah.
No, go ahead.
Anyhow, and then our fleet maintenance, that one I kind of brought down a little bit, but.
Can we lower the pool operations anymore?
Uh, 16, 16 right now.
Is there any bills rolling in for the end of the season pool stuff?
Oh, yeah. Oh, yeah, 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 yeah. Yes, sir. Yes, ma'am. But no, I think the 16 might have about a grand, not much of a wiggle room.
Just curious, because we're going to ask about, you know, a budget. You'll be asked about the.
Sure.
One less pool and what that means.
Yeah. But that, that line right there, what you're saving there in that line is chlorine and chemicals. That's what you're saving there.
And fix the flat.
And fix it, and, yeah, what's that guy's, the commercial there? No, JB Weld. Mark turned me on to JB Weld. That, that's magical stuff. And then park operations, that's over what was budgeted, but not by much.
Do you anticipate maybe some reduction in heating oil or propane with the addition of the mini splits?
Good question, Peter. I think, I think we may, may see some, because right now what we've been experimenting is the burner, the oil burner hasn't turned on. When we had the last week there, the cold weather, thing never turned on because the mini splits were working. But now, well, the mini splits increase that electric cost, I don't know much about that stuff, but I'm thinking it's going to increase the electric side of it. So, yeah, you're taking a little here, but you're putting a little over there.
But did you do that in the budget? No?
No, I just used the same amount of gallons. I based it on our gallon usage and then what the cost was for the heating season for '25. And I didn't change the gallons.
Maybe we could take a look at the expenditures for October, because they are running them, you are running them a little bit now.
Yes, yeah.
Just to take a, compare last October to this October and see electric, electric use.
Actually, two, I mean, September two, Peter, because we had for AC.
Okay.
Yeah, we should, should look and see if we're rooting any benefits from those mini splits.
Yeah, I'll look into it.
Or, not necessarily, even if it's going to be more of an expense side on the electricity side.
Right.
We want to make sure we're budgeting in that area.
Got to look at both sides of it, yep.
You know, you can reduce one and increase the other to make it, so that's the reason why.
And then other than that, programs, right about the same. So the biggest, as I said, the lion's share of this, of this increase is in the, is in the wage line. We just.
Do you have any idea what the total increase request is percentage wise?
For this department?
Mm-hmm.
Well, if I go on my other numbers.
Can I just clarify just for my own, are you talking about the default number that he was given to deal with or the proposed budget?
Yeah, yeah.
It's either 11 percent, it's either 11 percent.
So my, so town hall was 11.9 percent. I think Rick was close, but that is again comparing.
Default.
Default to, yes.
But I would say ours is about 11 percent, a little more with the default of that. And then from my adjusted number of the reallocation, it's about a 5 percent. If that makes sense.
Yep, makes sense. Rick, do you have anything in CIP this year?
Oh, CIP, thank you. And then in CIP for '25, we have the rebuild of the tennis courts slash pickleball for 475.
It's on page 24.
470.
And this is the tennis courts?
Tennis court and adding, adding pickleball courts.
But it's just that whole court area at Barnard?
Yeah.
And you've taken the pool stuff right out of the equation? Oh, for next year, nothing, you're not going to?
The commissioners want to put it off for a few years, and they did ask me to look into our, the other increase, the other thing, too, that we had an increase this year in the pool line was about, it's only $7, but 350 a month for a handicap porta potty. Because our toilets, our bathrooms are not handicap accessible. I mean, you can get into the pool, that's handicap, you know, get onto the deck, you can get in and out of the water because you have lifts to get in and out of the water. But you cannot get into the bathroom. So we actually put a handicap bathroom out there. They did ask me to look into that, can we change it? And maybe I was wrong a little bit, but I just, I guess personally, it's like, you're going to spend, that's still stupid money. I mean, you're still going to spend 45, $50,000 just to gut out what you have, and you're only going to have a bathroom for male, a bathroom because it's not even big enough to, to service. And if you have a pool that has 120 people, you need a heck of a lot more bathrooms. Nothing's to cope, there's not a single thing in to cope. We get grandfathered because it's been there since, what, 1978? They did ask me to look into that, but I truthfully have to say, I don't know.
And, no, I just want to clarify, this is just for the architectural portion of the tennis, of the goal court.
No, that's the put in, that's the install.
Okay. I believe you.
Super nuts. Everybody else?
I had a whole, whole education on that, but some guy, some other guy gave me a call. And this company, Cape and Island, they, they do, they did the track, because we, we got to fix the track because it has a heave in it. So there, I got talking to him, and they do, oh, I forgot the name, it's all, it's all concrete. They put down their tennis courts that they put down are 100 percent all poured concrete and got guide wires underneath that pole and all this stuff. And he said, you'll never have a problem for like 30 years. And I'm like, wow, you think I can do that for 470,000? He says, no.
No.
All right, thank you. And DPW.
I apologize in advance, I'm getting over a sinus infection, so I'm gonna mouth breathing here. Okay, so I think as Derek and Danielle and Rick have all mentioned, it's a little bit of a trick this year with comparing '24 at the default versus what we had proposed. So a lot of my increases are two years worth, of course, for contractual stuff. So the story of this year's budget for DPW pretty much is the personnel increases, both from the non-union perspective.
This is, you're on start on page 14, am I right?
I'm sorry, yes, 14. The personnel increases across the board for non-union, but then also, as you know, the Teamsters had a contract last year on this, on that ballot. So the good news for them is any of their increases will also hit the default. So it makes my DPW gap not quite as big as it might look on paper when it comes time to default comparisons. But the, the biggest changes, so can I just go down by division and kind of make a few notes? Cemetery, if you look at the bottom line from the '24, the default level item anyway, it's pretty, pretty much static. The biggest change, increase was, was of course, the, the labor related costs. You'll see those go up a couple thousand, but then on the, on the, near the bottom, facility maintenance is the big change in the other direction.
Yeah, what was that a reduction for?
We had a couple of years where the trustees had purchased columbariums for West Lawn expansion, and then they kept that, that budget level for 2024, well, in the proposed budget for 2024 to also extend the Shirley Hill Cemetery up past the end of the Stonewall and up into the field beyond. So we have yet to spend any significant funds for that project yet.
Will that go this year?
That's the hope. As soon as things get a little too, too cold for asphalting and, and road work, we're going to kind of shift. That'll be one of our off season projects. So that's the big change there, no columbarium, no Shirley Hill extension, but that offsets the labor. Moving on to highway, of course, that's where the most of our employees are, so that's our biggest hit from the, the personnel cost perspective. But you'll also notice, and you might recall this, too, from last year, with the proposed budget for '24, we had rolled in the uniform and clothing lines from each of the other divisions into the public works highway to kind of simplify that, especially on the AP end of things. Instead of breaking down each invoice, it just allows us to pay one invoice. But that change includes the clothing service cost increases that we've seen since 2023, and then those roll ins from the other divisions. But it also includes, there's a uniform item on the Teamsters contract that was part of their bottom line for the voters, that, that was added in there as well. So that's, that's another one of those spots that the default level will be a little bit higher than it otherwise would be due to the Teamsters contract. Let's see, turning page to 15, here's where we start to get into some of our contracted services where we've seen that, we're seeing the biggest jump from our 2023 contract numbers. So we've had two years worth of increases now. Consulting services, that's a handful of items under that line, but the biggest change was roadside mowing. If you might remember last year, we renewed our roadside mowing contract, so we have new rates there. And we're also trying to get to as much of the town as we can with that because it pays off later when it comes to tree removals and safety items and certainly resident complaints. We've also got a new contract that went out to bid and was. We've also got a new contract that went out to bid and was awarded for line striping. So all pavement markings. So we have a pretty good size, two years worth of contractual increases there. Um, the tree cutting line, last year I proposed an increase. So I, I left the number for this year where I left last year's proposal, just because we're actually spending quite a bit on tree removals. We don't tend to go out looking for trouble with trees unless it's part of a road project. For the most part, these are hazard trees or, um, you know, either widow maker type scenarios after a storm that kind of, they find us unfortunately. So it's just kind of the cost of owning a bunch of roads. Uh, let's see. Um, guard rail repair. We just recently, actually, our year-to-date number looks a little better than it did a few weeks ago. We received some revenue back, which doesn't always happen from an accident. They were able to claw some back from the, the driver's insurance. Town insurance policy does not cover guard rail repairs. So normally this is a line that we expend and then unless there's a, usually they're hit and runs with guard rail. But if we have an insurance company, we can charge, we do. Uh, we've got one more, hopefully, install section left this year, but we left that item where we had proposed it last year for the 13.
Derek, can we find out what we did recover?
Again.
Sounds, I want to think it's about a $5,000 ballpark, might even be more, but.
Well, it'd be nice to know, especially, you know, you can say, well, the offset of revenue was such and such.
Oh, right. Right. Uh, let's see, moving down to another notable item, propane. I don't have hard numbers yet because we don't have 12 months worth of activity with this. But as you probably remember, our new fresh air system at the highway garage has preheaters because when you're changing over that much air, it's cold air in the winter coming in and it has propane fire preheaters. So although we haven't had a whole year worth, I anticipate that we're probably going to be right at that budget number, if not even more, depending on how, how cold the winter is this year.
Adam, can we just go up a couple lines? Operating supplies, 47, 120. What's the year-to-date overage? Is that close to what you requested in 24? Where is that from?
I don't think so. I think I had requested a flat line. I'm going to have to look at that one. I didn't, I didn't check actuals on that.
So far this year's overspent?
Yeah, we're, we're high. I'm trying to think off the cuff, but I can't, I'll have to bring that to you next week.
Okay.
Okay. Uh, let's see. Um, down to gas and diesel for the, for us, our big, well, diesel in particular for us is a big number. Not a huge change though from the 2023. So we've gone up for our 2024 request and now we're back down again, close to 23. So that's, I guess the good news there.
Adam, are we anticipating any diesel trucks coming off the fleet this year?
No, no. Um, we may if, well, it would be 2025. We wouldn't really see an impact, but potentially on one of my CIP items, it might be a little bit more fuel efficient, but not, not off the line altogether.
So questions on that line, gaseally? And so far this year, you spent 19, 339, but your only question, 17, 794.
So a good chunk of that is on the previous rates, which for 24's budget, we had increased gas and diesel.
So I could put rate decrease over there.
So, so yes, compared to.
Rate adjustment.
Rate adjustment. Yeah. I guess that's the best way to, to say it. So now we're, you know, 10 months in, a lot of those were at the old rate. Um, salt is a good news item. We came down in my 2024 budget and then they came down again, another buck a ton. We have about 3,000 tons a year. So we're, we're down overall from the 23 default level by about $10,000.
Cost went down?
Yep. Um, I was a little worried right as we're gearing up for this, that the dock workers' strike was going to negatively impact it. It still could. I think, last I heard, that's not a, you know, fully finalized, but as of right now, best information we have, the current rates are locked in with, with the state.
Adam, I know that there's a handful of communities in the area that have looked at their salt to sand ratio. Is that something that we're?
We have, we're kind of ahead of a lot. A lot of communities still mix sand and salt, which kind of they, they sort of counteract. Really here, we only use sand for two instances. One, if we're gravel roads, if you treat a gravel road with salt, it turns, you know, it'll turn muddy in the middle of winter for it on you. And then the second time we would is if temperatures fall so far and we have like a ice storm, or if they're just so, so cold that salt stops working around 16, 15 degrees. Below that, you start to have to use some calcium chloride or magnesium chloride, which works at a lower temperature. Below about zero, your, all bets are off. So if we had a, an extended cold snap, that's when we'd get into just sand treatment roads. In that case, you're trying to create a layer on top of the ice. You're not trying to melt off anything. You're trying to create a friction surface like sandpaper almost. What current practice, best practice is if you use a sand-salt mix like most towns used to use, you're actually doing two counteracting things. You're trying to burn off ice at the same time as create a layer of sand. And all that happens is your, your salt, it creates pockets, the sand goes in and then you lose the traction and now you're just putting sand on your roads unnecessarily. So not to mention on the backend where we especially have a lot of closed drainage in town, that turns into higher costs on our catch basin cleanings and more material that we have to get, the street sweeper to pick up, that kind of thing. So currently the best practices are, are to, to stop using mix. So we had done that. I say we, the town had done that long before I got here. So, so we're, we're currently, we calibrate all our spreaders, we weigh in the roots. So the, it's sort of a peer pressure almost sort of thing between the root drivers. They can kind of see how much salt they're using for their route against others in the department. We do have a number of people who have gone to the Green Snow Pro or the DES sponsored classes for salt reduction. So we try to follow the best practices as best we can. Can't necessarily speak for others, but I know a previous community I worked with was a 50/50 sand-salt mix and it was pretty disastrous every, every spring when you're trying to clean that much sand up off the roads and out of the shoulders especially. Uh, let's see. Okay. So there's some savings there. Drainage repairs, as the cost of materials go up, that, that line has kind of crept up, but we've got it at the level I proposed for last year, which was 85 based on actuals.
But you spent 100 already this year?
We've spent nine, yes. We've got 91 plus an encumbrance. I don't anticipate any more coming out of that line. I think the, the, that's going to carry our small one-off drainage stuff. Everything else we have drainage related is road plan related. So that's where we're going to be. I don't, I mean, as, as Rick would say, I'll, I'll be frank. The, um, part of the goal this year, of course, is to try to make as little, fewer changes as possible so we can kind of get out of this default situation. So there may be a few of these that I just keep underfunded and we'll try to, you know, make it work. Come in at the end under, um, because I can't see us getting a budget passed where there's increases all over the place. I try to limit them only to, as best I could, to the ones that were contractually related. Um, let's see. Gravel and stone, that one was an ad. I can't remember how that all went down. I think I proposed 20,000 last year. It got taken out and then the budget committee maybe voted to put it back in or something right at the very end of the season. I don't quite remember how that played out, but anyway, we ended up at 20. And that's, as you can see, that is a one that we tend to spend. Coal patch this year is a little bit artificially high because of the, all the work on Mass Road required so much temporary patch. Every single structure down there, all the sewer structures, gas, ours, the multiple transitions that we had have some wedging involved. So, and then we had a fair section of our excavation that had to be tint patched as well. So I see that coming back down again next year. Um, we've got some encumbrances for stuff that we haven't flushed out yet. Mass Road and Elm Street sidewalks haven't been paid for, but they have been encumbered and then resurfacing lines, all encumbered, but we haven't had been billed for all that yet. Uh, coming on over to fleet.
One quick question. Sorry. Sidewalk maintenance, is that where that money is going to come from, fix the sidewalks over there in Pernod?
Yes. Yep. We haven't been billed for the Elm and Maple work yet. And then when we do get, the big encumbrance there is for the curving tip-down work in, in Pernod. Yep. So that'll, that'll be used up, at least most of it.
One more question. Where does the flaggers come in over here? Does that come into contract consulting services or?
Flaggers are, they come out of the reclaim line. So typically it's reclaim related. The bigger projects is when we hire flaggers and especially this year with the two main drag ones. So those, that, those get paid out of our reclamation, our road plan line.
So as we're going through and looking at all these bills and signing all the bills, it's come up a few times about the flaggers. But would we be better off as hiring them as summer labor, summer laborers?
Potentially. Um, we, we could talk about, one thing I forgot to mention and it'll tie a dovetail in, I did not increase any of our seasonal wage lines. So in addition to those 34 and a half people, we have 10 seasonals, four highway laborers, four cemetery laborers and two engineering interns. We could think about plusing up maybe in the spring, see how things look when we go out there.
Like we spent a lot of money on.
We do spend a lot. The, the trade-off is, uh, we do get a, I'm going to try to be diplomatic. You do get a certified person, a certified flagger when you hire from a flagging company. We've, if you have been keeping track, I think we're on our third flagging company this year, just because of the nature of the work and the labor force. No shows, underperformance issues, et cetera. So it's not exactly a contracted service that we're super happy about, but in general, they are certified.
If you had them under your control, wouldn't you be, wouldn't that be advantageous?
We could. I think the way to go about that, we'd have to look at some early season, maybe pay a company to come in and, and if, if we can, maybe pay T squared. It won't be too expensive. Have a flagger certification course for all the summer help. Now you've got at least a baseline of knowledge. For the, for the group that we get in the summers, sometimes I'm a little wary of, they don't have a lot of experience even as drivers. So the anticipation factor sometimes isn't there with summer help, but certainly something we could look at because it is a large chunk of money. It's cheaper than full-time employees, certainly year-round. But, and especially where we've had a few, anytime you work on Mass Road and, you know, we've done this a few summers in a row now, Mass Road, Elm Street, some of the main drags, we tend to need a lot of flaggers. As we get forward in the road plan and we get off of some of these main roads, it, it will go down.
If you have, you know, four, six or whatever and you need to bring some more, then fine. But I just, because you know, I know that extra two hours a day really irritates me. I don't know what it is.
Overtime. Right. When we get into our 10-hour days, there are eight-hour day plus.
It's just overtime for that other two hours.
And, you know, is it, well, like I think I covered it. I feel it's bad. But yes, I, I, I think we can look at that. And if the board's open to that idea, maybe I'll advertise for more.
Well, I don't know. It's just my, I think, I know Mark's brought it up to me.
One of my pet peeves. I mean, you see the bills, 3,000, 4,000, $5,000. And all they do, no offense, don't take this to wrong, they stand there, they hold the sign, talk on their cell phone, and they do talk on their telephone. And, you know, they flip the signs slow and they talk on the radio to the other guy and just.
In their front.
Call us, you know, I'm not saying anything.
It's a tricky thing because a lot of, to a lot of people, they, you know, they represent our department as well because they're the closest interaction a lot of motorists have, you know, and that's a tough.
My point is I think you would have more control over them.
Yep, you would.
We, we did, we do have a few instances in the past where even full-time employees, but maybe early on in their careers, especially, you know, the Main Street project and some of these Mass Road projects where it can become clear pretty quickly that they're not quite up for the task, you know, to be dropped into something like that. That would be my fear with the seasonals, but I, I think we could augment with some training for sure.
Go ahead.
Let's see. Okay. Oh, fleet, sorry. Um, we've got some, we had some big ticket items already this year with fleet maintenance and in the, in the garage, I guess more of those show up in the solid waste end of things because the, at one time or another, it's pretty much guaranteed we're going to have at least one of our solid waste trucks down. But fleet maintenance for this would be any, any of the highway vehicles. So as cost of parts goes up and then if we have to send anything out, prices go up as well. The towing expense, I had flagged that as one that we may be able to bring down. I, I think I missed it when I was going through my budget. That was a, I had brought that number up. So that's 53320, about five up from the bottom. I brought that number up last year in my proposal. We did replace a large equipment trailer in CIP and the new trailer can haul the, the dozer. So we were paying, we were in a trend of paying to get the dozer moved from job site to job site. And I think that is not going to happen as much, shouldn't happen as much now at all. So we, we may, if the board wants an easy cut, you could, you could bring that one back down, I think to the 1,800 level.
Can I just go back up the top on the overtime?
Yes.
You got almost 12,693 so far this year, but you're only budgeting 4,500. You've budgeted 4,750 last time. Or actually, we don't really know what you budgeted.
Yes. So a couple of things with that. The, last year we had the on-call stipends going into winter that went into effect. And that affected two supervisors in the fleet end of things.
Well, we only have it in 25.
The, oh, the proposed. Um, that's a good point. I'm going to have to talk to finance. I'm not positive if that's reflected in the full-time wage number. Now that you say that, I'm not sure I saw it in there. So let me take that as a note for next year.
Talking about overtime pay and Danielle's calling and the stipend.
We just need to double check where the on-call for DPW's budget is.
Gotcha.
Make sure it's in there.
In it. Yeah. My fear is it may not be because that was post going to default.
Go ahead.
The last two lines in that section, Adam, 45, 550 and 45, 560, both of those, the year-to-date are both pretty low and then the actuals from 2023 are also below budget? Is that maybe some reduction space in those?
The miscellaneous tools perhaps. So the reason it's under, sorry, I take the last one first. The miscellaneous tools, we had hoped to swap out our diagnostic tool and software this year, but the price came in too high. We actually don't have enough remaining to do that. So I may need to keep that number in for 25 to, to change that out. We, we pay for a current software Mitchell, which would go off the books, but then the new would, would be added in. Usually when we do that, the first year, we, we take it of the department budget and then IT would, would take it on after that. But that would be replacing an item that's in IT's budget hopefully next year. The painting and recon, we have a couple items left. The, uh, one of our loader, snow pusher attachments is almost completely shot. So we need to refurb that, but rather than purchase a new one, we're going to try to keep what we have. And then we haven't paid for it yet, but all of the light duty pickups and one tons have oil undercoating this fall. So we're going to, we're going to try that and see if we notice a big difference when it comes time for, you know, postseason cleanups in the spring and see how they're faring. So that's one that I'd like to keep in there because I think we'll be pretty well, between those two items, we'll be close to spent by the end of the season.
You're going to need the details on that. She's going to need to go to the budget.
Right.
Make sure you got some good detail on that. When they look at that and say, oh, you only spent 2,500, you want 20,000.
Right. Yeah. And I don't, depending on the timeline, sometimes we don't have updated year-to-date if it falls mid-month or whatever.
We should have October.
Can use October.
But if not, if you can get a PO in the system potentially.
Okay. And then wrapping up down into solid waste, couple items of note there. Employee development, 44, 300. That one was over. We had a couple, we had some staff turnover. So we had to get some solid waste operator training and scale house training. But then also we've, with the, with the brush burner, we have to send any employee that's tasked with auditing the performance of that to EPA certification smoke school twice a year, every six months. So, so that's built in there. So that 1,700 level was, I think, my proposed number for 24. So that seventeen-hundred level was, I think, my proposed number for twenty-four. Consorting services, we had proposed increasing that last year due to actuals. And, um, some of that is from, uh, um, one of the items that comes out of that is landfill, um, mowing. So our mowing contractor rates, uh, went up. Uh, let's see.
But there again, you've already spent eleven, almost eleven-five and you've only been doing budgeting ten-five.
Right. Yep.
Okay.
Hazardous waste, uh, this one has kind of got an up and down, uh, tells the tale. We, we had a spike of thirty-seven thousand in twenty-twenty-three, um, in the middle of that year. Came to the board about, um, removing household hazardous waste, um, for all residents of the state versus, or anybody, I guess, anywhere. So now, uh, um, as of that year's restructuring, we've gone to resident only. So that's helped, but the, the quantity even from Goffstown is still high. So, um, we're, we're getting a lot of material in, which is good. It, it's a good loss leader because the more we pay for that, the less contaminated potentially either our catch basins or our trash are. But, uh, the rate that we have to pay the third party that comes in to, um, do the final disposal and trucking of that, uh, is also going up over time. So, um, uh, I had proposed last year, bring that to thirty-two and, uh, I think by this last pickup we have, we'll be either right there or just over.
What's the revenue offset from that?
Um, I'd have to look, we, I believe it's commingled, so it may be a little tricky, but we could run a report from, um, Scale House Software and, and get that number. And that's a, a tough one, I, you know, where you, you want it to be low enough that people don't mind paying for it. But not so low that it's, you know, on the backs of everybody else who's using their paint or using their pesticide or whatever instead of limits it. Okay, and then a couple of the hard hitters, recycling removal. Good news is, uh, it's down from twenty-twenty-three's default level. It was down quite a bit from the proposed, uh, twenty-four budget. Um, we were paying about seventy-six a ton for recycling, um, at the time of budget creation last year. Uh, that's come down. We're, I think, either, uh, it's around forty bucks a ton right now, so quite a bit, uh, down from where we were.
I'm confused on that. Because you're showing nine thirty, your date expenses, sixty-six, eight thirty-six, and you have another encumbrance of seventy-nine, six fifty-seven, which is over a hundred and forty-six thousand.
So what we did at the beginning of the year, trying to get better about POs and finances probably ready to stab me, but, um, I don't know how many we're up to, but it's a million. Purchasing policy requires it, right? So we've been trying to get better at the beginning of the year. Any big POs, we know for a fact, we're gonna have a ton of invoices in the past. Recycling, because it comes in in dribs and drabs, we used, we didn't used to write a PO for that, but really, if you're spending X number of dollars over the course of the year, we should try to do one. So this year, for the first time, we added, uh, right at the beginning of the year, um, we generated a PO for the entire budget line. I believe that sixty-six, eight plus seventy-nine, six represents what my proposed budget for twenty-four had been, the revised number. So that should match the revised. So we're gonna have a, uh, of that seventy-nine thousand remaining encumbered, we won't spend all of that because, as long as the rates stay where they are for the last couple of months of the year, um, that encumbrance will largely be able to go back to general fund. So one oh eight is based on, uh, I think I used forty-five dollars, a little higher than where we are now, um, and our annual tonnage. So it's down from where we were in twenty-three and down significantly from where we.
The only problem with that is if you have it encumbered, you can carry it over.
Uh, we could, but I think it's part of that.
I'm just saying that's, I, I, that's a problem when you do it like the way you did.
If you have an unscrupulous department head, yes.
Like I said.
Lucky for you.
Do you understand what I'm saying?
So, yes.
Typically, typically we reserve it for specific projects where it's a, when you're doing a weekly delivery and disposal, uh, I don't believe our auditors would allow us to do that. So we would, that one would get pulled off and it can liquidate it back to the line.
Yeah, I know you guys see a pretty good list there in December, but the list that we start with and for that is even bigger. This would be one of those items, I'd say, take it off.
This is probably gonna disappear the way it's done in the future.
Yes.
We won't do that like that normally.
I, I don't know. I mean, I would, I would look, when you look at the schools budget, what they do is they encumber all their employees, all their salary line. So I, uh, this might actually be, I mean.
Way out of the future.
Well, it might, especially because you know you gotta get rid of the recycling, you've gotta get rid of the refuse. Just, you're tying up that money so that, you know.
I mean, it, it really is one hundred percent to comply with the purchasing policy. If you want to carve out some of these type of things, sort of, I, I don't care one way or another, but we are trying to say, okay. This year, how much recycling do we anticipate? As of January, that rate was still pretty high. I encumbered our entire recycling budget.
So what you're saying is, once you got your, you got what your budget was gonna be of the hundred and eighteen, that's what you should have encumbered. But it was too late by then because you'd already written a PO for the year.
Well, if you had the, that extra column that says twenty-twenty-four budget revised, my revised number is, was bigger because the rates that I had anticipated for twenty-four were higher than the twenty-three default.
So that was part of your budget adjustment that you did in March?
So I took the adjusted numbers and encumbered those. If that.
Isn't the adjusted number the one eighteen, five hundred?
It's not shown on the sheet. That's a column that we're gonna add.
Oh, okay, okay, okay.
Yeah, cause the tipping is the same way.
Right, yes, okay, yep.
And that was one of my.
Now, the tipping is, is a little bit more of a different story because of those tipping, we've gone the other way. So as, um, recycling prices came down, which is always nice, but seems like almost unpredictable. Uh, tipping were under contract and it's a set increase now going forward, uh, as it has been. The other piece with this is we changed from, um, uh, Casella and the North Country landfill to, um, Waste Management and the Turnkey landfill because of that expiring contract this past year. And, uh, Casella could not offer us that long-term and Waste Management could. So, uh, the current request, four sixty-four, eight hundred for twenty-twenty-five, represents our contractual rate and then our average tonnage per year. That one we will, we may have some left in that, um, but I think, I think we've been pretty tight with my, um, encumbrance because of, um, this is gonna be behind, so they're billing a year, a month back. So I, we've got more than a, or a quarter, full quarter left, um, to be billed before it hits the year-to-date, so. But same, same as the recycling, if we come into December and we've got money that needs to be liquidated, we'll count the number of bills left for the, you know, for the year. Sometimes they bill into January, they do bill into January for December's loads. So we'll just make sure we don't encumber any.
Yeah, I wanna get your hands flat.
Exactly.
Um, what's with the facility maintenance? Did you push off a product? Cause your year-to-date is super low, but then we're asking for a five thousand dollar increase? It's line fifty-three, four sixty.
We had planned to try to do, um, so we've got a rental line that we've been, um, renting a, a high lift for, uh, truck trailer clean-offs every winter, um, to get the employee, uh, from, from being out there at, you know, four thirty-five in the morning and potentially bad weather, trying to clear off manually a truck.
Mainly the trailers that we're talking about?
Trailers, yes. And, uh, we had hoped to get, uh, something either built or modified, like a brush scraper or something like that. That hasn't happened yet. Um, Zeb has been kicking some tires with the welding, uh, a guy that we've been using to see if he might be able to modify something. I'm not positive it's gonna happen, but, um, that was the big one for this year that we're, that we're really hoping to get in before the, um, before the new rental season starts in December usually. I think we've been picking it up around the first of December. So I'd like to think we can get that spent before it gets through Budget Committee. It's gonna be a pretty much custom deal.
They make those, don't they? I mean, they've got them like over UPS and Walmart, people like that, they just drive their truck underneath it and clear it up.
You're talking about clearing the root snow and ice off the top of the boxes?
Yes.
Take a look at downtown truck center.
They have one. We asked Donnie for some, uh, Donnie Boyle for some, uh, feedback. They only used it two storms last year. He didn't have any great intel. He actually still is, uh, uh, gonna get back to me, but, uh, he was gonna ask his folks up in Vermont, who've had one a little longer, a few years, to see if they like it or not. They are ridiculously expensive and then if you wanted to get a loader mounted, sometimes, uh, people have those where you can lift it up and it's the hydraulics of the loader operate the, you know, rotating broom rather than just a static one that you drive under. Those are even more, but, um, so anyway, long way of saying that was this year's idea. I, I think we're gonna try to get something in before we have to go back and now rent that. A, a lot of the rental money gets spent, um, you know, because winter's mainly January, February, March. So we don't have a ton left this year if we do have to rent one. But next year I'd like to avoid that cost. The money next year, um, we've got, uh, some, um, compactor, uh, building maintenance that we need desperately. We have a lot of self-service windows that if you've taken a hard look at the transfer station lately, um, old, you know, hinge stuff that's wide open. We've got birds flying in, rats, you know. Shouldn't say that too out, but.
They're gonna eat too.
Stuff coming in, yeah, we're feeding them well. So we've, we've got a lot of building, uh, uh, related type repairs that need to get made.
So does plant facility maintenance.
So it's plant, so plan for, for twenty-five, twenty-twenty-four is, um, yes, hopefully that, uh, that's a nice, uh, clearing mechanism. Uh, and then to just round it out, I, I looked, uh, we're like eleven-eight or eleven-nine, I think, percent from twenty-twenty-three's, uh, twenty-twenty-four, as adopted to twenty-twenty-five increase, so kinda in line with the others. Uh, CIP-wise, good news right off the top. Another thing that will be represented later, but is not yet, uh, showing up here, I'm sorry, twenty-three of twenty-six, is, uh, on our project end of the house. Well, let's talk about vehicles first. So for our, our vehicles for CIP, we've got a, a few items that would defer either in twenty-twenty-three or twenty-twenty-four. Primarily, uh, a two thousand and four roll-off truck and a two thousand and four roll-off trailer that were combined, uh, in CIP for a single unit, which won't require a Class A, um, that had been deferred from twenty-three. Uh, we've got a curbside truck, a twenty-twelve curbside truck that was deferred from this current year as part of the, um, default, um, uh, reallocations. But also we had just put an engine in that and, um, uh, made sense to try to get, uh, another year out of this rather than turn it in immediately after that. We also have a, uh, one of our electronic message boards, two thousand and six, um, that had been deferred and a two thousand and seven small equipment trailer, um, that makes up the machinery equipment line there, which is fifty thousand dollars. And then the item under, I don't know why I did this in reverse order, but, um, uh, highway vehicles, five, three, two hundred, uh, a hundred and fifty thousand. That's a, um, Ford F-five fifty, uh, two thousand and fifteen F-five fifty, uh, dump truck with plow package and wing. So those are the vehicles. Our projects, the good news there is that, um, we've, in addition to our reclamation line, uh, we have an improvements expense line at four hundred and twenty-three thousand. It's quite a jump, um, of course, from, uh, last year's, but that is a, um, uh, largely offset by a grant. So that's that hazard mitigation, um, preparedness grant, uh, that you folks on the, uh, some of the documentation for, um, very recently. So most of that is, is offset by that grant fund. So that'll show up when you get your revenues, um, and not via Delta from, from the default. But also, um, the other thing I had, had added on there was, um, our, even though liquid asphalt pricing is down a little bit, but mainly unchanged over the last twelve months, um, the base price of the actual finished asphalt product has gone up significantly over the last couple of years. So, um, in order to try to maintain the, the status quo from how much yardage we've been doing, um, uh, I added two hundred thousand proposed to that reclamation line. I would highly recommend if we're gonna even talk about that, put it in as a special article like we've done in the past, ask the voters if they want to add it, add it.
What's that, what's, what's that?
Uh, the reclamation, um, so I, for one point eight, one point six, I requested one point eight just to kind of, um, offset that increased cost of asphalt so we don't fall behind. But I would, I would say if, if, uh, especially coming out of the default, that makes sense to probably peel off as a special article. Um, let's see, the other two things that I just want to mention while we're here.
About the improvement expense, what was that?
Oops, uh, sorry, that was the, um, that was that culvert, that monolone of road culvert.
But that's the one with the grant.
But that's got the grant, so yeah, it's gonna be largely offset.
So our percentage is not four twenty-three, is it?
No, that is the gross, gross basis. When the revenues, uh, get in front of you, it's gonna be ninety, ninety percent. Yep, so that was ninety-ten.
Ninety-ten?
Ninety percent of that will come. And then the other two things I, I wanted to mention led to special articles. Uh, I know Derek and Danielle and I had talked about, uh, for me in particular, a couple of my contracts. If you wanted to, one option would be to bring like solid waste tipping potentially, um, to the voters to sambronize. If, uh, you ask the voters if they want to approve what's remaining of, uh, the seven-year contract. And they do, now in the default, we can add that contract rate. You don't take a potentially, you know, six-figure hit every time if there's a default. So that's one option anyway, that would be open to you. That contract in particular would be a good one to do that if you wanted to. Other item, it's probably not a, it's not directly a budget-related, but it could.
Sorry, Adam, just to, what would we do if they said no?
So say if they say no, then we're still in a position where we, we have to get rid of trash. We have, well, unless we find some other way, we have to pay the contracted rate that we have. But we would be stuck at that if we went default again next year, for example, we'd be still stuck at that twenty-twenty-three default number.
I thought we had a contract.
It hasn't been, the, the multi-year contract has not been approved by the voters, so it doesn't go into default. So you're always a year behind. What you can do is you can take those costs to the voters, say that, so, so that, it's very similar to a CBA. So you're, you're showing them what the projected cost increases are in future years and then you can build it in to your default budget. Because we have, we have not typically done that, but that is one strategy. Cause as Adam says, if we're in default next year, he's still gonna have a twenty-twenty-three.
Casella rate.
Casella rate, not a, not a twenty, or, or twenty-twenty-six.
Waste management rate.
Waste management rate.
So it, it's one way if, if we start to get into later budget season and we see that gap between the default and the proposed, you might want to, you know, that may be a good one to think about. Um, the other thing to think about for a special article, I'll mention it now, we can definitely do a lot more discussion about it because it doesn't involve the Budget Committee, but it could involve my operational costs going forward a bit, is, um, uh, if you want to take a look at farm roads and, um, single residence-type, uh, dead-end roads that years ago the town had decided to plow. Got a handful of them around town. We could look at discontinuing that. It would require an act of the voters, of course, but we could do a cluster of discontinuances and then that absolves us from future winter maintenance, but as well as any, some of them are paved, a fair amount of them are paved. So are we gonna resurface these and they glorify driveways in a lot of cases, so.
Be good to see some numbers on that.
Yeah, um, and, and, you know, some of it's the, you know, okay, ten storms a year. How long stick you really each time? It's not terrible, but we do get calls, hey, what, you know, why are you plowing the, the farm road across the street? You know, it's a driveway, don't you know? Well, technically it's a road.
I love that one.
Yeah. That, there's pros and cons to that and there are some liabilities to if you discontinue a long, long stretch of road with road frontage and all that, what, you know, what happens there. But, um, but that's another one to think about if, if we're gonna be adding special articles.
So you've got a couple of things that are coming back, you're gonna straighten out.
Yes, sir.
More information on?
Yep.
All right, anybody got any questions? All set? All right, great.
Thank you.
So we'll, um, we'll revise the next year budget report to add that column in. Is there any other information that would assist the board, uh, as you hear the final department presentations next week and then start to deliberate?
Now, I think it's important that we know, it's kinda confusing when you're looking at it, you know.
Yeah, yeah.
I think, um, just to make the comment for Budget Committee notes, if we're gonna put any notes in our line-by-line that we give, if we talk about like adding in those, I mean, cause I just asked about ones that I had just seen real quick, but the projects that are in the works are, cause you know actuals is always a, a thing when we have bills, projects that are in the works, we just haven't been billed for, or things that get paid at the end of the year, that's always a big. That's always a big topic, so I'm just trying to figure out how to best anticipate the actuals conversations that the department has had to... Maybe if they pre-note them and just mention it in their line-by-line.
Yeah, we can talk as department heads and see as we get to the point of work.
Just a strategy for...
Yep.
Cut it. Most of them have explanations, so...
All right. Let's move on to...
So Derek, are you going to put binders and separators in our mailboxes?
Yes.
Yes, thank you.
And since we're going to be reprinting these with an additional column, we'll just make them up, and then you can bring these to the meeting on Monday.
Yeah, I've... I made those on.
Yeah.
Yep.
I have one more question. So we got the health rates. Was there any change to... I'm sorry, I can't remember if dental, we get that later typically?
No, dental was a 5% increase.
Okay, thank you.
So this year, Health Trust did a little bit different. Many years ago, they gave you a different rate increase for each plan, and then they went to a point where they just average.
Yep.
They've gone back where they're giving us different rate increases for different plans. Our average is 9.8%, but there's some that are a little bit higher.
I'm also thinking about, one more thing, for the utilities, that overall our negotiations, the prices went down, and I just am thinking about for budget presentations, that chart of what Danielle was able to negotiate. That might be some very helpful information as well.
Okay. And what we can highlight is when they're looking, when the Budget Committee's looking at, they're going to be comparing it against the 2023 rates.
Correct.
So, yep, we can do that.
Okay, let's move on to new business. We want to take the Code of Conduct up here, or you want to wait through that?
I had brought it, and you could take it up under Old Business. What I provided the board was a redline copy to try and enact some of those changes that were discussed. On page six of seven are three new, I guess, paragraphs or subparaphrase about harassment with elected and appointed officials. And then there is just a slight change, well, not a slight change, there's a change on page seven. This really makes a distinction between a town employee versus... And a town department head versus elected, appointed officials. Again, in the state of New Hampshire, the New Hampshire state law does not grant authority to the town to take disciplinary action over elected or appointed members. Now, there are some ways to get that authority if the board were to consider a code of... Not a Code of Conduct, it's a conflict of interest ordinance. It's really designed for those fiduciary responsibilities, because that would have to go to town meeting. So this really breaks out that elected and appointed committee members are not subject to the investigation process. So those are the two big changes that you have here tonight.
Go ahead, Tom.
Derek, I know that the Library Board of Trustees is separate, and they're governed by their own RSAs, but should we include trustees in that?
So if you look on, you're going to find out where we... Exclusions on page six. At the very bottom, the last sentence, employees and volunteers under the direction of the Gofftown Public Library, Gofftown Super Commission, Gofftown Village Water Precinct, Village Water Precinct and Community, elected, hired, and appointed of this Gofftown School District are not subject to the provisions of this code.
Okay. What about election officials?
So election officials would not fall under. They would be... They would be more under...
They would be considered part-time personnel?
They don't fall under necessarily the same provisions. They would be more similar to an elected board member than they would an employee.
Even though they're paid and they have taxes taken out of it?
Yes, yes, yeah.
Are we sure of that?
I can confirm that.
Yeah.
We can talk to...
I was just trying to think of anything else we could include or should include.
Yeah, I'll check on election officials.
I read you through this. I was... I found some things that concern me, not that the things have changed, but, you know...
Yeah, if there's other items that have been there for a while, we could definitely go from...
Official products entering discussion for the legislature, any man of your... Encourage to publicly state dealings, interests, relationships, friendships, and possible conflicts. I mean, huh? What could be friends with half the people in town? Would that eliminate you from... Do you have to disclose that? I'm friends with the guy... Yeah, he's my neighbor. He's my friend. That's... I mean, how do you do that?
We think it's like an abstention from a vote? There's personal conflict.
Is it a personal conflict? Would that be half the people in town? Because you know them and you're friends with them?
Well, for you, maybe.
I'm just saying. I think that's...
No, I hear you. What page is that on?
That's the third page. Third page. It could be used against you with where this is written. If somebody comes into the planning board that's a friend of Callas', is Callas' supposed to say, "I got abstaining as a friend of mine"? You want to stay abstaining, Callas?
I do, because it would severely tie your hands in your ability to do what you're supposed to be doing. Yeah, absolutely.
Well, okay, well, just reading this, it says duty to disclose. But the conflict of interest just above talks about recusing yourself.
Talks about recruiting yourself because you're friends with somebody. Does that mean you can't make it... You can't dissipate in a discussion on a planning board or variances or... Is that how you read that? Am I wrong or...
No, I'm just saying, I think it suggests that each elected official really has to look at that. It's... You may have a personal relationship, but does it affect or influence your performance? The state law really does talk about the financial aspect. There are state laws on those. And then if you look under C, Duty to Disclose, it's really encouraging officials to publicly state any relationships. I know, especially when you're talking about land use boards. Land use boards, there are separate statutes in the land use statutes about, you know, what you're disqualified for. And I would say a friendship for somebody in town isn't a disqualifying. It's really how is that going to affect your behavior and your decision on that board, so...
Interesting, though, with possible conflicts, would that constitute like a lawsuit?
I'm just saying, with the nature of things now that anything belongs with...
No, I'm asking a specific question about a lawsuit, that you should publicly disclose that. It's a conflict of interest.
A lot of times in court, judges will say, hey, this defendant over here, his uncle was, you know, a client of my firm, you know, 30 years ago or 10 years ago, and things like that, and most people say, okay, I don't have a problem with that. At least it's on the table, he's disclosed it, and, you know, everybody can say, or ask your question. Now, do you lend him money regularly? Do you do this? Do you do that? How friendly are you? And, you know, that way there's... It doesn't come up later, that somebody can come up to you.
I don't have a problem with that if that comes up. My question is, they want you to disclose it. They want you to say, yep, he's a friend of mine. Oh, yeah, I know him. We had a drink box week, or we were out for coffee, you know. I mean, it's just, in a small town, or in a town, I mean, you know a lot of people in town. So how could you...
I can say the word...
I'm not trying to cause a... I'm just trying to say...
Yeah, if board members have suggested changes, this would be a great time to...
Well, maybe we could look up for a confirmed definition of duty to disclose, but I'll just say, Pete, to your point, it says encouraged publicly state. So I think that's the...
Yeah, and if somebody says, well, you didn't say anything, then it blows everything out, so... Let's study this. We've got a quote, a good copy of it now. I tried to read it on a computer. I keep... But you did, when you said, you know, your redline, it doesn't show up on my computer for some reason.
I sent it out as a word. It might be easier if I convert it to PDF next time and send it that way.
Yeah, that would help.
And then it would show? What's redline?
I was able to see it.
Wow. I understand.
But I also looked on my computer. So maybe that's...
Come on, try it on my tab.
I would like to request, though, I do think that if we have other suggestions, that we take them up, but I would like to talk about this, the portion on page six, even if we decide to add things or change things further, if that's okay with everyone.
I've read it a few times now. I don't see anything to change.
Me neither. And Derek, I appreciate you finding the language to note to, you know, to use the relevant authorities. So thank you for that.
Anybody got any issues with it?
Yeah.
Jim? I don't like the sentence in number two. History has shown that public entities are far from immune to this illegal behavior. I mean, that goes without saying, and I don't think we should say it, so I guess that's a lawyer, I mean.
Where are you, Jim? What's your...
It's like the second paragraph, the second line.
Page six, yeah, the second line. It doesn't change anything if you take it out.
So the second line on bullet number two.
Yeah. Could you see a defense attorney saying, what are you referring to? What other... What else is going on in town?
What you're saying is, you're saying that it should... Entitled to operate in an environment free of sexual harassment, period, and then eliminate the next sentence.
Right, and then go this time, committed to preventing such misconduct, right?
Yeah, that's fine. It doesn't change the messenger.
The intent is still accurate.
And if the board's going to remove that, can I make a suggestion in that first sentence on item number two, that it be read operated in an environment free of harassment rather than...
Yeah, good point.
So you're saying the town should operate in... That we're talking about, the first line?
Yeah, all officials and board members of the town of Gofftown are entitled to operate in an environment free of harassment. Right now, it's a sexual harassment, but...
Harassment, period.
Harassment, period.
But sexual harassment is noted in bullet three. I'm good with those changes for this portion.
Yeah.
Anything else, Jim?
I don't think so. Not in that section, no.
Okay, anybody else? Okay, we'll move this on to our next meeting. Is that okay?
With the corrected redlines, yes.
Yeah.
And I've got a couple of notes of items to turn up, so that you'll see this next Monday.
Excellent. Thank you. Okay. Old business, there's really nothing. I looked at that, everything's the same very much, right?
Yeah, I think the only difference is Danielle and I were over at the fire station this morning. Ambulance two was back. They were dealing with a couple last-minute items on that. They were putting new cans up in front of that and having us contact insurance on that, but that one was back for repair.
So anticipate it back at the end of the week. It's pretty much...
It's, yeah, it's here. I don't know if they've officially put it back in service yet, but they were putting the tires on it today.
Transmission's being... Who's doing the transmission?
ATG.
Okay. Well, anything else?
I'll share with you the Village Ad Hoc...
Yeah, go right ahead, Callas.
Pedestrian Bridge. We, as you may recall, we printed up 100 flyers to hand out. We handed out 85 of them. Very well received, got a lot of positive comments back. We even got one entity, the Franklin Savings Bank, who expressed an interest in partnering with us and helping a lot out, so... So it's all positive, very good.
And you also had a river meeting too, right?
Yep, yep, that went very well.
And you had Cory come in?
Cory was there. It went for two hours. Cory was very patient. He went through the whole dam bureau's operations and policies and procedures, and was very patient, took a lot of questions. I think we're going to have him back next time at our next meeting to talk about fisheries because there's a lot of concern about dams being removed. The reason you remove them is to improve fisheries. Now, what does exactly that mean? So we're going to have somebody from Fishing Camp come in and talk to the committee about what that does to improve fisheries. So...
Anybody else?
Do you think that there's a more kind of unified understanding of where we stand and the potential, what could happen down the road? Because I know there was some...
Relative to the dams specifically?
Yes.
Oh, yeah, I think so, clearly.
Okay, that's great.
And I think, you know, the general population is now comfortable with the fact that Hadley Falls is going away, but it's not the end of the world. We're, as it was before, conceptual planned. Cory was kind enough to send a member-colored conceptual plan. They'll give that to members of the committee so they can look at it for the next meeting to look at, next steps.
That's great. I know there are people eager to help, but maybe a bit confused on where they could be of use.
Well, I mean, Glenn Lake, and I'm asking other places that... I'm asking right now, is a lot of mud and stuff...
Yeah.
Oh, you answered the question, so everyone said, no, then go ahead and work on your dock.
Yeah.
Yeah, might as well. Anybody else? Anybody here for public comment? Your last chance, seeing them or close public comment. Mark?
Can we have it?
We do not have any either.
Oh, do not? Okay.
No, non-public.